Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for Wednesday, April 28th. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Ledlow, Iskowsky, Parks, Perry, Reyes Smith, Viegosa, Weiss, Sin, Padilla, ten members present in the quorum, Madam President.
All right, we do have a quorum, council is in session. We are going to start with a presentation of Mr. Padilla, but I'm not sure if he is ready yet. Why don't we proceed by, well, let me see, why don't we, we will start with public comment, period, and let me ask the following people who submitted public comment cards to come forward. Mr. William Smart, Reverend William Smart, Marvin Schlaggader, and Jim McQuiston.
Are you ready for me? Thank you, Martin Schlaggader with the Coalition for Clean Air. I know that you're going through budget and finance hearings right now, but I just wanted to take one moment to state here publicly to all of you at once that the Coalition for Clean Air is very concerned about the proposal in the budget to get rid of the Environmental Affairs Department. The Environmental Affairs Department was created back in 1990 because the city perceived the need for an agency to be able to work throughout the departments, to bring together the various different pockets in which environmental work was being done, be able to collaborate, create collaboration, find opportunities for citywide activity, and the proposal in front of you would be to dismantle it and put us back into pre-1990 conditions essentially. So while the idea to consolidate environmental affairs is intended to save money and in theory create efficiencies within a department, it goes against the grain of trying to provide specific expertise, to provide efficient services, to provide that focus that you need. And my concern as a closing comment is that to disband the Environmental Affairs Department would be to lose our environmental focus, not at this level, but within the departmental structure. And I think that's a, that would be a very serious void that we'd have to fill in some way. Thank you.
My name is Pastor William D. Smart, Jr. I'm the pastor of Christ Liberty Tabernacle Church located in your district, madam, and then I'm also a resident of Councilwoman Perry's district, and I serve as a community organizer with Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy Lane. I'm here to speak also about the proposal to move the Environmental Affairs Department, the three various, very important programs of it. You know, when we begin to talk about environmental justice, we have to understand that just like we're concerned about air, we're concerned about water, when you talk about environmental justice, it affects, disproportionately affects people of color. This city has made in the past some important strides with the department being its own independent department. We see that it acts almost like an embossment. It must stay independent so that it is able to keep its course it has been going. I think when we talk about the economic impact, you'll see that it gets about 1.5 million out of the general fund, but yet this department was able to get close to $7 million in grants last year alone. That makes it, it's not a good, sound economic move to make it a part of a more bureaucratic operation. It needs to maintain its independence. Thank you very much.
Jim McQuiston, who will be followed by Angel Calvo.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I couldn't speak yesterday on a matter that was before you, and I do want to speak today in public comment about the Department of Transportation correcting signs which are illegible or whatnot. I did a little calculation, you know, these people are donating their time, and I figured out how much the city is saving from this donation of time because we are concerned on the budget. It turns out that they are donating $2.8 million in employee salaries free to the city to repair these signs. That's a tremendous benefit to the city, $2.8 million. Also, in the report yesterday, they talked about the fact that we cannot maintain our signs right now. We do not have the wherewithal to maintain their signs. Just think about the fact, this one-time donation of $2.8 million, and I talked to Ms. Butcher, she's agreed to donate all the colas next year of the non-fawn personnel. Just think of the tremendous sacrifice they're making, and I want to congratulate all of the employees for making such a tremendous contribution to our city.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Angel Calvo, I'm with Engineers and Architects Association, and I'm here to address the issue of Environmental Affairs Department, the elimination of that department by the mayor's office, and there's some points we'd like to bring out about what some of our represented employees do at Environmental Affairs. One of the points we want to make is that the employees at Environmental Affairs have brought in $25 million in grant funds to the city of Los Angeles over the last 10 years. This is money that's been used to plant trees and to do various projects out in all your districts. So that's something you should consider in the future whether or not you're going to go ahead and eliminate this department. Some of the other things to consider is, LA has the worst air quality in the nation. That obviously doesn't come as a big surprise to any of us. Will the work that Environmental Affairs does to try and combat bad air quality, will that be now transferred to the mayor's office? Will they be doing those jobs? Right now you have an impartial and unified voice that tracks environmental regulations and rules. You won't have that anymore if you eliminate Environmental Affairs. You'll be losing the essential technical expertise that you need to do the city's brownfield program. This program eliminates blight in all your districts and helps with economic revitalization. You're going to lose that if Environmental Affairs goes away. You're going to lose the department and the employees that basically handle the best cost-effective strategies for interdepartmental coordination of all your environmental activities in the city. Finally, Environmental Affairs does more than just provide services to this council and to various departments. It also provides services to the citizens of Los Angeles. They are the clearinghouse for all environmental services. You're going to lose that. So again, EAA, Engineers and Architects, is totally opposed to this, and I think that this council really needs to look at what's being proposed for the elimination of this department. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the speaker cards that were submitted for public comment. Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Madam President, and obviously this is an agenda, so I can't speak to the public comment, but I will just give a point of information to the folks who are here today that this afternoon, one of the departments that we'll be discussing is Environmental Affairs and our budget deliberation, so folks are invited to come after 2:00 here in the council chambers to also have their voices be heard with Budget Committee, and that would be an effective time to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for that announcement, Mr. Garcetti. Madam Clerk, let's run through the calendar.
First order of business is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, Ms. Perry seconds, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
They are approved.
On the regular agenda, item notice for public hearing, item one, excuse me, item one, there's a request to continue that matter to May 25th.
Is there any objection to continuing item one until May 25th? Seeing none, that will be the order.
Item number eight is also a public hearing item, and the applicant consents to a continuance to June 16th.
Item eight, any objection to continuance? Seeing none, that will be continued until June 16th.
And also there's a request, Madam President, on item number 36 to continue that matter for 30 days, and that would be to May 28th.
Item 36 is a request to continue to May 28th. Seeing no objection, that will be the order.
Next items, Madam President, are items for which public hearings have been held, items nine through 36. Item number nine is confirmation of a commissioner, do you wish to hold that matter on the desk?
Let's hold that.
Then that would be 10 through 36 would be before council.
Ms. Perry, oh, did you want to speak on the?
Item 22, please.
Item 22 is called special by Ms. Perry. Members, Ms. Han?
Item 23, special, please.
Special 23, Ms. Han. Any other items, members 10 through 36 are before us. Ms. Perry?
Item 20, special for Councilman Parks, please.
Item 20 will be called special.
I believe on that one, it was a continuance that Mr. Parks wanted? Why don't we go ahead and continue that?
We'll continue it. He's just walked in.
Mr. Parks, we want to continue number 20 on the lead paint until Friday? Is that right? Okay.
All right, there's a request for Mr. Parks to continue item 20 to Friday. Any objection? Seeing none, that will be the order. So items 22, 23 are called special, item nine is the commissioner. Any other specials, members, items 10 through 35. Seeing none, those are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved.
Next items, Madam President, are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 37 through 52, 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, we will call item 47 special because we have a card. Any other, well, let me first say, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on any of the other items, 37 through 52? Seeing none, we will open and close the public hearing. These matters are now before us. Members, any specials 37 through 52? If not, we have those before us. Open the roll on 37 through 52, except for 47. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved.
Next items, Madam President, are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 37 through 52, 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, we will call item 47 special because we have a card. Any other, well, let me first say, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on any of the other items, 37 through 52? Seeing none, we will open and close the public hearing. These matters are now before us. Members, any specials 37 through 52? If not, we have those before us. Open the roll on 37 through 52, except for 47. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved.
The next items, 53 through 57 are closed sessions, and there are requests on item number 54, the city attorney is requesting that that matter be withdrawn.
Item 54, the city attorney, letter on the closed session item is requested to be withdrawn. Any objection to that? If not, that will be the order.
And also on number 55, there's a request to continue that matter for one week.
Any objection to continuing the 55 matter for one week? Seeing none, that will be the order on that as well.
And that would leave the rest of the closed sessions for council's consideration.
All right, we will hold those on the desk. Mr. Parks?
Just have number 48 forthwith.
48 will go forthwith. Let me also have item 14 go forthwith. Let us return now to item number nine, which is the commissioner appointment.
And that's a Personnel Committee report recommending approval of Timothy J. Yu to the Board of Civil Service Commissioners.
The commissioners before us. Members, we have this commission appointment, item nine, to the Civil Service Commission. It was recommended by the Personnel Committee. I see Mr. Zine is not here. I don't know if any other members have any questions or wish to comment. Seeing no request to speak, the appointment is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Yu, you've been confirmed, and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Madam President, item number 22 is called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry, item 22.
I just needed to have that item sent forthwith once we vote on it. That's all.
Okay. Item 22 is before us, members. Is there any wish to speak or comment? If not, open the roll on the item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That matter is approved. Forthwith per Ms. Perry's request.
Next item is item number 23, and that was called special by Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han, item 23.
Thank you, Madam Chair, colleagues. I'd like to invite members from the Housing Authority, Eleanor, if you would come up to the center table. Colleagues, this was a motion that Councilman Ledlow and Councilwoman Gruel seconded, or we co-presented this motion, and this was as a result of, if you remember, among some of the other crises that happened in my housing developments. This was an occasion at Jordan Downs where, if you recall, a young man and his family were being severely threatened, they felt like their lives were in danger, and had, there had been a breakdown in communication with the department and with the LAPD, so he was forced to go into hiding for a couple of days. As a result, a lot of his belongings were stolen, his place was raided, so we asked the Housing Authority if they might work on an emergency relocation plan to go into existence immediately if family in one of our housing developments needed, felt like their lives were in danger for any reason, and felt like they needed to be relocated. So if you'll hold my time, I'd like to have, if Eleanor or whoever would like to talk to me.
Consider in the future whether or not you're going to go ahead and eliminate this department. Some of the other things to consider is LA has the worst air quality in the nation. That obviously doesn't come as a big surprise to any of you, of us. Will the work that Environmental Affairs does to try and combat bad air quality, will that be now transferred to the mayor's office? Will they be doing those jobs? Right now, you have an impartial and unified voice that tracks environmental regulations and rules. You won't have that anymore if you eliminate Environmental Affairs. You'll be losing the essential techno expertise that you need to do the city's brownfield program. This program eliminates blight in all your districts and helps with economic revitalization. You're going to lose that if Environmental Affairs goes away. You're going to lose the department and the employees that basically handle the best cost-effective strategies for interdepartmental coordination of all your environmental activities in the city. Finally, Environmental Affairs does more than just provide services to this council and to various departments. It also provides services to the citizens of Los Angeles. They are the clearinghouse for all environmental services. You're going to lose that. So, again, EAA Engineering and Architects is totally opposed to this, and I think that this council really needs to look at what's being proposed for the elimination of this department. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the speaker cards that were submitted for public comment, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And obviously, this is an agenda, so I can't speak to the public comment, but I will just give a point of information to the folks who are here today that this afternoon, one of the departments that we'll be discussing is Environmental Affairs and our budget deliberation. So, folks are invited to come after 2:00 here in the council chambers to also have their voices be heard with Budget Committee, and that would be an effective time to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for that announcement, Mr. Garcetti. Madam Clerk, let's run through the calendar.
The first order of business is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves. Ms. Perry seconds. The minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
They are approved.
On the regular agenda, item notice for public hearing, item one, there's a request to continue that matter to May 25th.
Is there any objection to continuing item one till May 25th? Seeing none, that will be the order.
Items two through seven are building and safety assessments, and the department has requested those matters be continued to June 15th for the proper notification.
Is there any objection to continuing items two through seven till June 15th? Seeing none, that will be the order.
And item number eight is also a public hearing item, and the applicant consents to a continuance to June 16th.
Item eight, any objection to continuance? Seeing none, that will be continued till June 16th.
And also, there's a request, Madam President, on item number 36 to continue that matter for 30 days, and that would be to May 28th.
Item 36 is a request to continue to May 28th. Seeing no objection, that will be the order.
Next items, Madam President, are items for which public hearings have been held, items nine through 36. Item number nine is confirmation of a commissioner, do you wish to hold that matter on the desk?
Let's hold that.
Then that would be 10 through 36 would be before council.
Ms. Perry, oh, did you want to speak on the?
Item 22, please.
Item 22 is called special by Ms. Perry. Members, Ms. Hahn.
Item 23, special, please.
Ms. Special 23, Ms. Hahn. Any other items, members, 10 through 36 are before us. Ms. Perry?
Item 20, special for Councilman Parks, please.
Item 20 will be called special.
I believe on that one, it was a continuance that Mr. Parks wanted. Why don't we go ahead and continue that?
We'll continue it. He's just walked in.
Mr. Parks, we want to continue number 20 on the lead paint till Friday? Is that right? Okay.
All right, there's a request for Mr. Parks to continue item 20 to Friday. Any objection? Seeing none, that will be the order. So, items 22, 23 are called special. Item nine is the commissioner. Any other specials, members, items 10 through 35. Seeing none, those are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved.
Next items, Madam President, are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 37 through 52. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, we will call item 47 special because we have a card. Any other, well, let me first say, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on any of the other items, 37 through 52? Seeing none, we will open and close the public hearing. These matters are now before us. Members, any specials, 37 through 52? If not, we have those before us. Open the roll on 37 through 52, except for 47. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved.
The next items, 53 through 57 are closed sessions, and there are requests on item number 54, the city attorney is requesting that that matter be withdrawn.
Item 54, the city attorney letter on the closed session item is requested to be withdrawn. Any objection to that? If not, that will be the order.
And also, number 55, there's a request to continue that matter for one week.
Any objection to continuing the 55 matter for one week? Seeing none, that will be the order on that as well.
And that would leave the rest of the closed sessions for council's consideration.
All right, we will hold those on the desk. Mr. Parks?
Just have number 48 forthwith.
48 will go forthwith. Let me also have item 14 go forthwith. Let us return now to item number nine, which is the commissioner appointment.
And that's a personnel committee report recommending approval of Timothy J. Yu to the Board of Civil Service Commissioners.
Good morning.
Commissioners before us. Members, we have this commission appointment, item nine, to the Civil Service Commission. It was recommended by the Personnel Committee. I see Mr. Zine is not here. I don't know if any other members have any questions or wish to comment. Seeing no request to speak, the appointment is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Yu. You've been confirmed, and thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Madam President, item number 22 is called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry, item 22.
I just needed to have that item sent forthwith once we vote on it. That's all.
Okay. Item 22 is before us, members. Is there any wish to speak or comment? If not, open the roll on the item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is approved. Forthwith per Ms. Perry's request.
Next item is item number 23, and that was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, item 23.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I'd like to invite members from the Housing Authority, Eleanor, if you would come up to the center table. Colleagues, this was a motion that Councilman Ludlow and Councilwoman Gruel seconded, or we co-presented this motion, and this was as a result of, if you remember, among some of the other crises that happened in my housing developments. This was an occasion at Jordan Downs where, if you recall, a young man and his family were being severely threatened. They felt like their lives were in danger, and had, there had been a breakdown in communication with the department and with the LAPD, so he was forced to go into hiding for a couple of days. As a result, a lot of his belongings were stolen, his place was raided. So, we asked the Housing Authority if they might work on an emergency relocation plan to go into existence immediately if family in one of our housing developments needed, felt like their lives were in danger for any reason, and felt like they needed to be relocated. So, if you'll hold my time, I'd like to have, if Eleanor or whoever would like to talk about what you've come up with, how the plan works, and how the funding is in place, and how you see this happening going forward. Thank you. If you'll hold my time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hahn. The Housing Authority worked diligently to make sure we put a relocation, an emergency relocation plan in place. We did already have a policy for relocation, but when that incident happened, we wanted to make sure that we improved our policy so a similar situation does not happen in the future. I asked staff to work on putting together a better policy, and I'm going to let our interim executive director, Judy Luther, let you know what's going on.
I first met with Mercedes Marquez to see what they had in place as far as emergency relocations. They work with the American Red Cross, and they had a beautiful plan laid out. What I've done is I've taken that plan, and I have my last meeting with the American Red Cross to put the plan into effect for the Housing Authority, hopefully starting Friday. The other thing that we've been working on is, and that would relocate the family to a hotel or to a safe home, it would also pack up their belongings so they would not be damaged, and it would take care of the family immediately. The second thing that we've done is we've worked with the LAPD, and hopefully, we will have an MOA in place shortly to provide extra police services. And in the event that somebody needs to be relocated, they will call me directly, and I will, are my designee, and they will be moved immediately. And if it were to happen tonight, they will be moved, and I will pay for it myself. The Housing Authority does have the funding in place to respond to your question on funding, because as I said, we already had that policy in place. We just made it a better policy so that it was move first, move the families first. As long as a high-ranking LAPD officer contacted us and let us know about the immediate danger, we would move the family immediately and then worry about the paperwork the next day.
Let me ask you a couple of questions. One, so you're basically saying that a resident in one of our developments, if they feel threatened, they need to first call LAPD to sort of get a recommendation, or can they call you directly?
They can call me directly, and I'm having resident meetings and making sure that that is well-known.
That was my next question, is sometimes we have good intentions, but many times the residents have complained that communication outreach is very difficult for a number of reasons. What are we really doing to make sure that everyone has that number handy on their refrigerator in case they need to call for help?
One of the things we're doing, Councilwoman, is we are having regular meetings with the resident management groups. And when something major is taking place, even if it's something as quickly as a conference call, to let them know what's going on, then we're setting up meetings at the developments with the resident leadership, as well as as many residents as possible. What's very important to me, Councilwoman, is that we improve our communication. It is so important for our residents to know what's going on. This is impacting their lives, and so the Housing Authority is working diligently to improve our outreach and regular communication with our residents.
If a resident was to call 311 from their land phone, are our operators prepared to handle an emergency situation like this?
That I'm not sure of.
I would think if your operators contacted LAPD to let them know, LAPD is aware of this, our new policy, and so if the 311 operators contacted LAPD, then they have, they would have a system in place to make sure we were contacted.
Could I ask you, either Judy or Eleanor, to make that official and maybe write a memo to our operators to make sure that this might be some, a call that might be coming in and the route that they need to take? Because I think once they're informed and knowledgeable, they're great. So, if you could do that, I think that's a good idea.
I'd be more than happy to.
Let me just ask one more thing, is one of the problems that happened with this incident is, of course, we found out later that that resident was not on the lease, and that seemed to present some problems, a little bit of a delay. How do we address, I mean, that's a bigger issue in our developments, and I know we're working to make sure we can kind of clean up the rolls, but in the event that a person feels like they're in danger, they need relocation, and we find out they're not on the list, how does that impact your emergency plan?
It does not impact it whatsoever. We're going to move the individuals, whether they're an occupant or a resident, and we will figure out the paperwork the following day.
But the most important thing, Councilwoman Hahn, is to protect the residents regardless. And once we move them to a safe location, we will then deal with any of the paperwork or details that need to be attended to.
Thank you. This seems like a very compassionate, well-thought-out plan and policy, and we're not going to know how it works unless we have another crisis. So, I know you're supposed to report back in 30 days on the implementation, but if we don't have an emergency situation, we're not going to know if it works well or not. But it sounds very good. Colleagues, I would ask that you would support what they're doing on this issue.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Great. Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Our next speaker is Councilmember Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilwoman Hahn, and also, as you mentioned, Councilwoman Gruel, for engaging on this, and I want to thank the delegation that's here. The tragedy that brought this to light is something that obviously no one ever could have foreseen nor had hoped for, but I think in the middle of this has also been a transition of leadership at Hackla that many of us are learning about as we go through this. And so, I want to say, on behalf of a number of people that have had a chance to hear from each one of you and those people that you're meeting with, that we really appreciate the new commissioner and the new leadership at Hackla, because I know that you have really, really engaged on this issue since it came to light through the stories in the LA Times and the media. And then also, just again to Councilmember Hahn and Mayor Hahn for getting on this very, very quickly and trying to identify not only how to bring people together, but also how to provide some funding, and that's obviously one of the biggest challenges for all of these. I'd like to ask a couple of questions. The relocation policies, as you reported in during the committee, I just wanted to clarify, our philosophy now is protect the family first, do the paperwork later.
Correct.
The decision to relocate a family or the decision to determine whether or not a family is in fact in jeopardy, you mentioned, as Councilwoman Hahn was asking you a question, I don't know if you misstated it or if there just needs to be a clarification, you indicated that any family that feels they're in danger can call you. What happens next? Is it your decision as to whether or not they are in jeopardy? Is it the LAPD's decision? Or is it just that the family calls, they feel like they're in jeopardy, and therefore you're going to relocate them?
I'm going to send somebody out there.
If you could hold my time.
I'm going to send somebody out there immediately and assess the situation, and I'm going to probably move them. There's no reason why we can't move them.
So, that decision would rest with you?
It would be, and I'm going to have a very lenient policy.
Could you just elaborate a little bit on the criteria that you're looking at? What are you, what is going to be your determining factor?
My determining factor is going to be the, what the resident is saying, any evidence that they may have, or any suspicion that I may have, or the individual who goes out there. It's not that hard to determine if somebody actually feels threatened. In fact, I'm going to move somebody on Friday, and there is no police report, but I actually believe what she's saying.
Can you, and I appreciate that, and I think part of what we were trying to get at through the committee was that there is one, there is, this decision's going to be vested somewhere, and everybody can kind of look at that person as opposed to a form didn't get filed, the facts didn't work, we never received the request, and I know that that is part of what we witnessed in this situation.
That is not a reason to have somebody living in fear.
Okay. Let me just, two other questions. What's the status of the family? I know that during committee, you had mentioned.
If we can just have the speakers actually bring their microphones closer to them, that'll help with the feedback. Thank you.
During the committee, you mentioned that since this incident, there's been difficulty trying to reach the family, and many of us were hoping that the city would find the family and make them whole for the items that were looted out of their home while they were out. Has there been any success at reaching this family?
Not, not to this date, but we are still attempting.
Still working on it. Okay. And again, I think for all of us here, it's important that the Housing Authority continue to try to reach that family, because I think how we deal with them sends a real message to how serious we are about taking care of people who are in our housing projects. And then the last question is, the interracial conflict dynamic that we talked a little bit about during committee, and I know Councilmember Hahn and Gruel had also mentioned this, what steps are we taking now to deal with some of the interracial challenges that are being confronted in Jordan Downs and Nickerson Gardens and the other housing projects throughout the city?
One of the actions I took at our last commission meeting, Councilman, on April 23rd, was I reinstated our Public Safety Committee. Through that Public Safety Committee, we will be bringing together a coalition of commissioners, staff, resident leadership, community leaders, members from the mayor's office, to help us take a look at what we need to do to impact long-term, how to improve safety within the housing authorities. And we know that some of the cultural conflict is a part of that. So, we will be working with community leaders and resident membership to take a look at what we can do to bring the communities together to address the conflict that we have right now from the standpoint of race issues and things like that.
All right, and just to close, Mr. President, if you could, as a council member has asked, just in terms of your continual reporting, could you provide us with some indication that you've involved the LA City Human Relations Commission, excuse me, Human Relations Commission, that you have involved the County Human Relations Commission, which has a different function than the city's? That you've reached out to groups like the SCLC, Maldaf, that you've talked to, multicultural collaborative, there are some groups in this city, the mediation services, I know Avis Ridley-Thomas is one of our best advocates in the city. Some indication for us that you're involving the professionals that have experience and have history working with some of the interracial conflict dynamics that we're experiencing, not just in the housing project, but throughout the city? Because we want to know that the experts are at the table when we're dealing with something so significant.
Most definitely, Councilman. Thank you for those recommendations, and we will follow up with those groups. I'm very familiar with most of them, so that would be our pleasure.
Again, thank you for taking this issue so serious, and thank you for the leadership that you're providing, and I'm getting a sense, as I know the Councilwoman indicated, that you're making some real great changes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Well, I want to thank for your hard work. I must say, though, that a few months ago, we did had a meeting, we conducted a meeting over at Mead Housing, and at that point, we had the residents from the area. We were talking about the transition as they were cleaning up the properties, going through the mitigation, and there was a commitment made to have a quarterly meeting, have an update, to follow up on the issues of Mead Housing. And in meeting with my staff this past week, I was told that that meeting and follow-up has yet to occur. And so, I just want to put that on the table because of the thought process that we hear from Councilmember Ludlow in terms of dealing with the ethnic issues and the lack of communication, the breakdown in actually building a community, that is important, and it can't be any more important than Mead Housing is anywhere else. So, I just want to make sure we follow through. I would ask if you can speak to your managers of that facility and figure out when are they actually going to come back? Because we had a great showing. The person did show up to the meeting. We had some of the managers there, we had LAPD, we had the social services, and we engaged the community folks, and there was a commitment made, and when I was told it has yet to happen, there's no follow-through. It makes our words hollow, and I'd like to make sure that we are speaking with substance and we follow through with some real action. So, I would look forward to your follow-up on that issue at Mead Housing.
Yes, Councilman, we'll make sure that that takes place. I will instruct staff right away to follow up on that and make sure that we schedule a meeting right away. We will let your staff know and keep you posted on how that's going.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Councilman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and I had originally been part of the queue to speak, but I think everything's been well-covered, and I wanted to thank Ms. Hahn and Mr. Ludlow for their leadership on this issue. And with that, if we can please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved, and thank you all for your leadership as well.
Thank you, Councilman.
Colleagues, we'd like to take a pause in the regular business to have two presentations. I'd like to recognize Mr. Padilla and Mr. Labange for our first presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, colleagues, and members of the public. It's with great pleasure that I call forward for a special recognition on his first formal visit to Los Angeles, His Excellency, the Ambassador from Argentina to the United States, Jose Octavio Bordeone. Random applause, please. And I'm pleased to be joined by my colleague, Tom Labange, here in this introduction. So, let me just be brief with some biographical information, and Councilmember Labange will add a few words and speak about the concert corps, which has such a great presence and involvement here in the city of Los Angeles. But Ambassador Bordeone was appointed as Ambassador from Argentina to the United States in June of 2003, so he's in his first year of service in this position, but he's no stranger to diplomacy, he's no stranger to government and politics, both nationally and internationally. He has served previously as congressman for the province of Mendoza as a member of the National House of Representatives in his home country. He's served as governor of the province of Mendoza from 1987 to 1991. He has served as a national senator for the term of 1992 to 1996, and was also a former candidate for the presidency in Argentina. In addition to his diplomatic services here in the United States, he's also been a visiting professor at Georgetown University, one of our country's renowned universities when it comes to foreign affairs and international relations, and he's been to Los Angeles previously. This is his first formal visit now in his new capacity, and he shared with me privately that he's just amazed and impressed with all of what's new in Los Angeles. The city continues to grow, the great new buildings, and I'm hoping that he shares it also with his travel industry associates who are here for the Powell Convention and encourages new travel, both for business and for pleasure, from Argentina here to Los Angeles. We want to make him feel at home, we want to make all visitors from Argentina feel at home here in Los Angeles, where more than 50% of the population come from Latina or Latin American backgrounds. It's not just a place for people from Mexican heritage, but really from throughout Central and South America. Our city continues to grow, and this is yet another example truly of how international a city Los Angeles is. So, with that, and before the formal presentation of our certificate of welcome, let me ask Councilmember Labange to come forward and say a few words.
Mr. President, thank you very much, and members, it's great to see the ambassador here, and Luis Cricler does a wonderful job as your great council general here, and as you know, there's 86 different consulates that call Los Angeles their home. Next to Washington, our nation's capital, and New York City, the home of the United Nations, Los Angeles is that most prominent spot, and we welcome you, Ambassador, Mr. Ambassador, and the council general does a absolute wonderful job, and he lives in the fourth district, which also helps in his areas that he works, it helps to promote Argentina, which is so important. The greatest thing about our city, 42% of the people in this city came from outside our great country, and now they're part of the American dream here. This is a very welcoming city, it's a very diverse city, and it's a city that welcomes all, and I just wanted officially welcome you, along with my colleague, the president of the city council, Mr. Ambassador, to the City of Angels. Okay. Here we go.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it, sir.
Mr. President?
While we're waiting on the pictures, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Viera Agosa.
Yes, while we're waiting on the pictures, Mr. Ambassador and Mr. President, Mr. Labange, thank you for bringing the ambassador here to greet us and to give him greetings. I have led a trade mission to Argentina and actually went on my honeymoon there, so I've been there twice, and I can tell you that it's a great and beautiful country, and the opportunities that the president of the council mentioned of trade and commerce and interchange between Argentina and Los Angeles are incredible, and to the extent that we can work with you to open up that interchange on all fronts, education, culture, the business opportunities will both prosper from. So, I want to welcome you here, and of course, you, Mr. Council General, and thank you for bringing him here to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Viera Agosa.
Mr. Ambassador, in addition to the certificate of welcome, which goes great on the wall, this is something that I hope, on behalf of the city council and the city, you accept that would be great in your home or on your desk.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is the time as I can to the city council our recognition in the name of the more than 100,000 Argentines that they live in Los Angeles, and at the same time, thank you for the opportunity to share with all of you this great example of participation of the people in the public. This is the time as I come to the City Council, our recognition in the name of the more than 100,000 Argentines that they live in Los Angeles. And at the same time, thank you for the opportunity to share with all of you this great example of participation of the people in the public issues, in the public activity was fantastic. Since we began democracy, we recovered democracy 20 years ago, our grand concern was to improve the participation of the people and the decentralization of the power from the federal system to the state and the local government. We are also an immigrant country, and our personality and our identity is part of the people that came from Argentina, and now they are Argentine as us. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Well, Mr. Ambassador, too, along with that great gift Mr. Padilla gave, we also want to present you a great book on Hollywood Then and Now. We know it's been 15 years, 1987, since your last visit to the City of Angels, and I know the great connection that Hollywood has with Argentina and all the great efforts between that, we thought you'd have that as well. So, welcome to Los Angeles and Hollywood.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Muchas gracias y bienvenidos. Thank you, Mr. President. For a second presentation as well, why don't we just pause one moment on that picture, Mr. Labange, just for a quick second presentation? Maybe we can take pictures in the back here. I'd like to recognize Mr. Padilla again.
And Mr. Reyes, I don't know if your staff told you, I needed you to join me for a presentation here. Colleagues, we have both another special occasion and a couple of other special guests joining us in council chambers this morning. We're going to do, had to do this one without a briefing paper. The two beautiful ladies in the back, if you would please come forward. Colleagues, in the era of term limits, unfortunately, we're not going to get too many opportunities to do this, but it's my honor as President of this council to pin one of our colleagues, Councilmember Ed Reyes, who both in his term prior to his election and now in his years on the City Council, has earned his 15-year pin with the City of Los Angeles. And so, Mr. Clerk, thank you for tracking that in the administrative process. And Ed, you're going to have to take that one off. Because of the budget cuts, these are no longer diamond-studded, but it has a big 15 on here. Ed, we're proud of you. Keep up your great service to the city and to your district, and you've earned this each and every day you've been on the job. Congratulations.
Thank you. Wow.
Wait, Mr. Reyes, I'm sure we have 15 council members who want to speak, but go ahead. You go first.
Oh, no.
Actually, before you speak, we do have Mr. Zine who'd like to put in a few words.
What are we doing? Congratulations, Ed.
Thanks, Dennis.
Congratulations, you. No, we could keep this going for a couple hours.
Don't do it.
I want to praise you because I know you're a wonderful man, very dedicated, very dedicated to the people of Los Angeles and to your community. And every time we go on a conference, we're always talking about how we can bring information back to the people of Los Angeles to help Los Angeles. So congratulations from a fellow career member of the city family.
Thank you, Dennis. Wow, I was looking in the back of the room.
Wait, you don't get to speak yet. Now, Mr. Ludlow.
This is a plump committee.
Mr. Reyes, I just wanted to actually copy Dennis Zine, and so I really have absolutely nothing to say, but I wanted, no, I'm kidding. The minute, the minute I walked in to City Hall after my election, I hadn't even been sworn in yet, you brought me into your office, sat me down, and showed me this amazing array of maps that you had up on your wall. And I know a lot of council members, you know, will put up awards and plaques and all these things. You actually had planning maps up on your wall. And so right at the beginning, I knew what kind of guy you were going to be. You're very, very dedicated, very focused, and congratulations on 15 years with the city.
Thank you, man.
Been a joy working with you.
Appreciate those words. Thank you.
And Ms. Perry.
Ed, I just wanted to say how lucky the people of First Council District are to have you, knowing that you came from the planning department and worked really, really hard for so many years.
Thank you, Chad.
And then served the First District as a staff person, and now this. And not only does your current situation serve as, I think, a good example, and I hope an inspiration to others like you. I know that you always keep in mind the needs of the children in the district, and I don't know if your wife knows this, but, you know, he talks about your children quite a bit all the time, and with a lot of pride, and especially what your daughter's doing in her school and her classes and things like that. So I just want to say that you've got a great combination of not only technical skill, but you have a big heart, and you're a very intelligent man, and a good father, and I'm sure a good husband. So First District's lucky to have you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, 15 years is a long time.
No kidding. Thanks, Chad.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. Thank you. I have the pleasure of learning my planning skills from you. You certainly have a lot of skills and a lot of dedication to the city, but I must say, unfortunately, we always have a lot of press here, and when they hear that you've been here 15 years, they might somehow get the idea that you got around term limits or something. So you might want to take a moment to clarify for the viewers and for the press how you accumulated 15 years, even though we live in an environment of term limits, where you pretty much are only allowed to be on the council as much as eight years. So congratulations for all your service and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you so much, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Let me also add my words, Mr. Reyes, it's been wonderful to serve together. I know we talk about this quite publicly, but the fact that we have a border between our districts, it doesn't feel like it, and the emphasis that you have put on social justice in the communities that we share and throughout the Northeast. It's wonderful that Northeast has somebody who grew up right where you are representing today. Your leadership on the river has been monumental in the city, and working with you on things from housing to community development has been really a great privilege of the last three years. So congratulations on the last 15.
Thank you.
And the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Eric. I was looking in the back of the room when I saw these two persons. Man, that looks like my wife and my daughter. And I was just staring as it is. So I'm totally shocked. You know, my heroes are my mom and dad and my wife. Without them, this wouldn't be possible, and so heartfelt thanks to my family. My daughter Natalie, she just got elected Vice President of her class the other day, so I'm like, she called me up yesterday and I said, "Oh, okay, mija." That's a lot of responsibility. But bottom line is that I appreciate your work. I appreciate the work of the community members, my staff, they truly are the ones in the trenches every day, they're the ones that take the heat, and I just appreciate all their hard work. My brothers and sisters, you know, I have three brothers and three sisters, and they're always backing me up. You know, I've got a, even the press was making fun of me when I first started running, goes, "Yeah, the Reyes family, you know, did this, and the Reyes family did that," and it was like a big joke, but bottom line is, without them, this doesn't happen. So I want to thank all of you for your hard work, your patience. I truly see us as one city. And, you know, when I talk to Adam Angel and Natalie and Eddie and I tell them, "Look, I can't be here with you when you're at your events," but there'll be every once in a while, I'll pull them in the car, and I'll take them to the projects and to the different housing developments and the parks, and they see, you know, a junkyard, they see wasteland. And I bring them back home, I'll show them maps, and I'll show them pictures, and I'll say, "In two, three years, this is what's going to happen there," and it's happening. So, and it only happens because of the great support of yourselves and the mayor, and I know we'll, we don't always see eye to eye, but I truly believe we come from the same heart, and that we really do want to see one city, and I just want to thank you all. And thank you, staff, Jose, Tony, Sharon, everybody's here, Rebecca, Monica, all you guys, and Mr. Dean, thank you for your support. And it's been a great 15 years, and went by really fast, and I think the next five years will go even faster. So thank you so much. Thank you, Alex.
Congratulations, Mr. Reyes, and thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Colleagues, if we can reconsider item number 41, we have an amending motion to that. If there's no objection, then item 41 will be before us. And that motion has been circulated, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it has, Mr. President.
Okay. Is there any objection? Mr. Parks, do you want to just sketch what the amending motion does?
Yes, thank you very much. We'd like to revise the wording so it's more specific to the controller. Basically, revise the REED recommendation number one to establish an interest-bearing fund titled Homeland Security Assistant Fund to be administered by the mayor with the City Council to have approval of the Homeland Security Grant Expenditure Plan. And then also to revise recommendation number four, where we transfer Urban Area Security Initiative Part I and II grant funds to other city departments and fund upon approval of the council. And then we add a new recommendation number nine, where we approve the expenditure plan attached to the file in the amount of $18,874, and 18,874,838.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. If there's no objection to item 41 as amended, can we please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved as amended. Next item, please.
Item number 47 was called special for cards from the public.
All right, we have one speaker card for item 47. Jim McQuiston, I'd like to come forward.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I have a statement in the file, I hope you all had it. This is a particular, nice piece of property. The city could really utilize this, make millions off of it. We don't really want to see it just vacated.
Mr. McQuiston, if I can ask you to just pause for a second. If we can ask folks to please take their conversations either outside the chambers so we can hear the business before us. Thank you, Mr. McQuiston. Please continue.
Yes. It's also right beside the 101 freeway. As a delegate to the 101 freeway improvement, we're really looking at this, part of this property for relief in traffic problems. So there also is a master plan and a CRA for Hollywood to really redevelop this particular area, including the street. So we don't think it'd be too wise to, at this time, to revert it to the public, I mean, to the private ownership. Also, the public depends on this. As a nearby person, we've sorely been hurt by the fact that the fellow has put up barriers and tried to keep the public out of the public right away for no apparent reason whatsoever. And so we think that this probably ought to be tabled for further research, maybe note and file for the present.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. McQuiston. Why don't we go ahead and do this, because I think it does bear some further investigation. Why don't we continue this one week? If there's no objection, item 47, we'll continue that for one week. So ordered. Next item, please.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yes, let us do that.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, those motions are posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. We already had public comment before, I know there, I think we're some folks who came here to speak during public comment. If you'd like to come forward at this time, this would be the moment we could reopen public comment, but if that's not the case, why don't you come forward? If there's no objection, since we did public comment so early, colleagues, we'll reopen it for a speaker or two. Please.
How much time do we have?
Two minutes, please.
Two minutes. All right. The first complaint is going to be about our elections going on in the downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. The Skid Row community has, does not really have a lot of access to the local newspapers, the government citizen, and the downtown news. And Central City East did not receive any of the mailers that were sent out on behalf of the downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council, because we're dependent on that. We figure, well, if we can't get the word out that way, then, you know, maybe, maybe the mailers will go out and we'll be able to get enough candidates. So now, right now, we're limited on the candidates that submitted, you know, candidate enrollment forms, because that's just the way it is. We got two big slates on our neighborhood council right now that are running instead of independents, that it would've been great if our Central City East community. And the reason being is that our landlords in Central City East, two of the biggest developers down there, low-income developers, make it very difficult for anybody to ask to access those of us that are living in those hotels. Now, they said I could go to them and maybe we could work this issue out, but sometimes they just don't take it seriously, and this is a very important matter, because our community needs to be heard. The second complaint is, I guess here's the quacky guy coming in here, the second complaint is, they've closed our laundry room at 10 o'clock at night. Now, for those of you that don't live down here, I mean, we got things to do during the daytime, too. We're not just, you know, sleeping all day or whatever, so I, the only time I can go and clean my laundry is like at midnight. So I, that's, that's my landlord, and basically that's, that's about it. But my biggest complaint right now is, why is my community constantly, constantly, people, I'm being serious, constantly in the throes of having to fight to reach out to get any attention because we are denied access, access, we don't even have a dash bus, we don't have access to the local newspapers because our landlords don't allow us to. We have a voice. We don't like all the things that go on in our neighborhood, okay? There is a very silent majority in there, and we need to be heard.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment. Ms. Perry?
Don, I just want to make sure that you know that Greg Nelson from the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment will be in touch with you about the elections, and then we'll work on the SRO issues. Okay? Okay.
We, I know there's a couple other speakers, if I can just ask them to come up right now, and we'll fill out the formal paperwork afterwards. If you'll just give us your name at the microphone right now, and we can hear your public comment right now. Please, come forward. Go ahead. You can just give us your name, and then we'll fill out the card afterwards. Go ahead.
Muy buenos dias a todos ustedes. Nuevamente, un grupo de...
Un minuto por transacción. We're going to have a translator come forward, so one moment, please, and we'll make sure that we have translation. Su nombre, por favor?
Mi nombre es Margarito Salgado. Muy buenos dias a todos ustedes.
Good morning, my name is Margarito Salgado, and good morning to all of you.
Nuevamente estamos aquí presentes porque nosotros los del sur central, de los ángeles, los campesinos, seguimos confiando en todos ustedes para que con su participación, su intervención y su buen juicio nos ayuden para que nosotros continuemos en ese lugar.
I'm here representing the farmers from South Los Angeles. I'm here to let you know that we continue trusting in your judgment and in your interest in continuing helping us, the farmers.
Nosotros continuamos demostrando lo que sabemos hacer, cultivar la tierra, educar a nuestros hijos, invitar a nuestros amigos, y seguir aprovechando lo que la naturaleza nos puede proporcionar.
We continue doing what we do best, that's cultivate the land, invite our friends, and continue farming and feeding ourselves, and taking advantage of Mother Nature, what's giving it to us, what's been given to us by Mother Nature.
Así que allí continuamos, aquí estamos presentes, y también estamos al mismo tiempo que venimos a ver por nuestro problema, nos estamos dando cuenta de todo lo mucho que ustedes trabajan en otras cosas, y estamos viendo que el Concilio de Los Ángeles sí trabaja, y eso es, eso es lo que confiamos y creemos, que ustedes puedan también trabajar para nosotros. Muchísimas gracias.
We just want to let you know that we continuously come here and we're making our presence known. We're realizing that you guys work very hard, not only in the issues that we bring to your attention, but also in a lot of other issues that affect our community. We wanted to thank you for your hard work and let you know that we will also continue working with you and for you, and we hope that you also continue working with us and for us. Thank you very much. Gracias.
Thank you very much. This, once again, concludes public comments on this item. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
The desk is clear for closed session.
Have we done housekeeping?
Yes, we have.
Okay. Colleagues, in conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Before, I asked the sergeants to clear the chambers, let me briefly announce that Mr. Parks is recused on closed session matter, agenda item number 53, so he will not be part of the closed session deliberation on that. We do have two other items in closed session, so Mr. Parks don't leave yet. Sergeants, now is the time to please clear the chambers. Welcome back into open session. Madam Clerk, next item for us, please.
First item before council is item number 53, and that settlement in the case of Armando Coronado versus City of Los Angeles, and that's in the amount of $400,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved, and again, as a reminder, Mr. Parks was recused on that item and was not part of closed session deliberation, nor the votes on that item. And now that the item has been dispensed with, forthwith, please, we can welcome...
And now that the item has been dispensed with, forthwith, please, we can welcome Mr. Parks back into chambers. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 57, and that's in the case of City of LA versus Comcast, and that's a settlement for the city to accept $400,000 in the claims of outstanding franchise fees.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved, forthwith, please.
And that clears the desk.
Okay, colleagues, that is the end of our agenda. Do we have any announcements today? Any announcements? Announcements going once? Mr. Parks? Thank you, Ms. Chair, just to make one announcement, the Sixth Annual Family Fun Fest at the LA Child Guidance Center for SERTY May the 1st from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at 3787 South Vermont. Thank you, Mr. Parks, southern announcements, Mr. Ludlow.
Mr. President, I just wanted to remind folks in the 10th Council District that Monday night, we held our community budget briefings at 6:30 last night, we held them at 5:30 at the Bahai Center. The night before that, we were at the SGI Center at Fairfax and Venice. Tonight, we'll be in my district office at 6:30, and then tomorrow night at Holman United Methodist Church. So, come out, we're reviewing the mayor's budget proposal, want to make sure that people understand what is being proposed, and we want to make sure that you understand how to tap into Councilmember Bernard Parks's Budget and Finance Committee meetings. Want you to come in there and ask good questions. So, again, tonight at Council District 10, district office, tomorrow night at Holman United Methodist Church at 6:30 p.m.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. For our young viewers and those who are young at heart, tomorrow, there will be a shared star given to Mary-Kate and Ashley Olsen, the Olsen Girls, will be getting a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame at 11:30. We welcome folks to come down, it's going to be over towards Hollywood and Highland to celebrate. I think they will break Britney Spears' record as being the youngest recipients for stars on the Walk of Fame, but they are already showbiz veterans, and we know them well. Congratulations.
Any final announcements? Mr. Labange?
In press reports from dispatches from our Department of Recreation and Parks, there was a sighting the last two months of a mountain lion, and I say this because I know some of us have hillside areas in the northwest part of Griffith Park, and we are taking the steps to inform everyone who uses the park of questions and others. We don't know the extent of it, or whether it's migrating through or coming from the Santa Monica Mountains, or whether it's coming from the Dahanga Wash down the Los Angeles River, but we're working on that, and we will keep everyone posted, but wanted to remind you, as you would say, the tip, the top thing to do is not run from a mountain lion, but just try to stand tall and make a little noise, and put your hands up there. That would be the most appropriate thing to try to scare... Exactly, Alex, you got it. I wasn't going to say what Dennis Zion wants to do, but certainly, we would try to do that for safety, but it is safe to hike in numbers. And we're also going to dedicate tomorrow the Razorback Trail Bridge, which washed out several years ago. Sierra Club hikers, somewhere is up to 400 hike on Tuesdays and Thursday nights in Griffith Park, and this new trail, paid for by a state grant, which was executed by Doyle Fromer, the great assemblyman from the area, provides a passage for safe crossing. So, that's a big Thursday activity tomorrow, but watch out for mountain lions. And tonight, I'm going to call on Councilmember Wendy Gruel for her leadership in helping arrange a very special meeting of regional government tonight at Sportsman's Lodge, where all of the Valley Council members are invited to participate. Wendy, you want to give a one-two?
Well, it's at 6 o'clock. 5:30, we're actually going to have a celebration of Lifestyle Magazine's many years of service to Studio City, and at 6 o'clock, we will begin a discussion and panel presentations regarding the 101 corridor, as well as other transportation, regional transportation issues in the South Valley. So, we invite all to participate and be there tonight.
Mr. Labange?
Yeah, and finally, members, I'd like to welcome Claus Beer. Claus, stand up, please. He hails from Germany, and before you clap, Eric, you've got to clap harder and more enthusiastic than that, because he has a wall, a famous museum of all the signs of cities throughout the world, and he includes signs here, out of your district, he picked up a North Broadway sign in the gutter at Alpine Street one time, and it's in his brochure, and he has signs from all out the world. So, Claus, please stand and be recognized by the Los Angeles City Council. Welcome.
Thank you all very much. Any final announcements? Any other announcements? Then before adjourning motions, let me just say we wish our Lakers luck tonight, hope they close out the series with the Houston Rockets, and get ready for round two of the playoffs. If I can ask everybody to please rise for adjourning motions.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I move to adjourn in the name of Karen Chizuko Fukunaga, a long, long-time resident of Sun Valley. She lived from April 2nd, 1936, until April 24th, 2004. She survived by her husband Eddie, daughters Julie, Linda, Diane, and grandchildren and siblings, and her services will be held on April 30th, 12:30, at Oakwood Memorial Park in Chatsworth.
Other tributes? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Oscar O'Leary, retired LAPD officer, who was a living legend. He made over 2,000 arrests during his 28-year career. He was a high school dropout, but he served in the military during World War II, signed up with LAPD in January 1948. He was foremost expertise in the area of pickpocket crimes. He's the one that basically obtained new case law that allowed convictions for the pickpocket arrest even when the victim could not be located to testify. This created a significant drop in crime in Los Angeles. Retired in 1976, and for decades, he taught law enforcement agencies and private security companies how to spot pickpockets. He was a consultant at World Series, Olympic Games, whole cities, he's worked with Dodgers, Anaheim Stadium, Hollywood Park, Universal Studios, and also our own Los Angeles International Airport. He died of natural causes on Tuesday, April 20th. His family's planning a memorial service later this week. He has asked, the family's asked for any donations to go to the assisted home hospice on Parthenia in North Hills. He leaves his wife and several other relatives.
Ms. Perry?
Mr. President, oh, all right, all members? Yeah, let's all members do that. Okay, thank you.
All members? Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I can't breathe.
Thank you all very much, this meeting is adjourned.